I would call to order the October, November 13, 2019, meeting of the Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp?
Here.
Mr. Van Buren is here. Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Here.
Commissioner Ann, Chairman Carmichael?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, normally we would have a swearing in of the public, but first, tonight, special, we'd like to administer the oath of office to a new board member. Matt Scales, would you step forward, please?
Sure.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Matt Scales, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, the laws of DuPage County, the Westmont Village Code of Ordinances, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties for the office of Commissioner on the Board of Planning and Zoning to the best of my ability.
I, Matt Scales, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, the laws of DuPage County, the Westmont Village Code of Ordinances, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties for the office of Commissioner on the Board of Planning and Zoning to the best of my ability.
Excellent. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now, could we have a new roll call?
Okay. Commissioner Van Buren is here. Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Scales?
Here.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Here.
Commissioner Sharp?
Here.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Here.
Okay, at this point, we would swear in all testifying attendees, if you would stand, please, and repeat after me. I swear that I will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in my testimony.
I swear that I tell the truth, nothing but the whole truth in my testimony.
Excellent. Thank you. A reminder to silence all your electronic devices, if you would, please, and did you sign in for your testimony already? Thank you. Next item is approval of minutes for the October 9, 2019, regular meeting. Have a motion to approve.
To move. Second.
Discussion, questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren says yes, and Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. Okay, at this point, we would have the open forum. Is there anyone from the public present who would like to speak on any issue that is not on our agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll proceed with the review of the public hearing procedure. The way our public hearing works is that first, the petitioner will come forward and be introduced and identify his or her petition, present the petition. It would be followed by staff comments on the issue, and which time the public hearing would be opened and the public would be available to comment and question the petitioner. After that, the public hearing is closed, and the commissioners have their turn to discuss and comment on the issue. At all times, we have the assistance of the village attorney to make sure we're doing it right and not making any omissions. After that, commissioners vote, and whether it's a positive or negative, the results of the vote, the village planner will send forward to the village board for an upcoming meeting. The petitioner will be notified of that, and as always, this is a recommending board. We do not have the authority to approve or disapprove. Our recommendation goes to the village board, but they have the approval authority. New business. For this meeting, Planning and Zoning Item 19-026, a request from the Community Development Department regarding the following: zoning ordinance text amendments to the Village of Westmont Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, zoning, to create definitions and land use regulations for daycare homes and centers in all districts. This includes Article 14 definitions, Article 6, 7, 8, and 10 on residents' district provisions, permitted uses in residence districts, in business districts, in the C1 district, in the manufacturing district, and in the office and research district. In addition, Article 10, off-street parking. Petitioner, would you approach the podium and introduce yourself? Thank you.
So, respected Chairman and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission and fellow resident of Westmont, good evening to all of you, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to present my case before you. My name is Shravani Batalla. I'm a resident at 417 Christian Street, Westmont, and I'm a Montessori educator by profession. I'm certified by AMS, that's American Montessori Society, to serve the children of age group birth to six years. And I have worked at three different schools for five years, and now I would like to have my own Montessori preschool, which I would like to start from my home. I have applied for DCFS licensing, and I have fulfilled all the requirements. All the paperwork is accepted by my licensing rep, and last week, there was a visit by state fire marshal for home inspection, and he gave the initial clearance with a few minor modifications, like three of them, which we are in the process of making. And after he gave clearance, the DCFS licensing rep gave me an appointment for next week, November 21st. She would come and visit my home and do the inspection, go through all the paperwork. So I'm very close to getting my DCFS license for running daycare from my home. So here I stand before you to request you to kindly consider making a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, which would allow daycare operations from residential homes in the district. So I know that the village has a few questions, so I'm going to quickly answer those. I have a short presentation made for that. And so the first concern was if it would endanger the public health, safety, morals, and comforts. So these are Montessori daycare activities which are operated within the house, inside the house, and they are, these operations are strictly regulated and monitored by DCFS. So they have a big binder of rules and regulations that we have to follow and strictly adhere to, and they, even after licensing, they would make random visits to make sure we are complying with all the rules and regulations. So they define the physical boundaries where the children should be, within which children should be, and also give the guidelines of how they should be taken care of, their well, their safety, their welfare, nutrition. Every aspect is being dictated, the terms are laid out for us, and we have to follow them very strictly. And also, they do the background checks and fingerprinting and medical checks for the inmates of the house. So they make sure everything is thoroughly vetted out, and the parents, community, everybody can trust us fully once we are licensed. So that explains that, you know, we are no danger to public health, safety, morals in any way. And the second concern is if it would impair property values or injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property. Again, it is, the operations are within the house, nothing is seen on the outside that will be detrimental to the diminishing values of the neighborhood properties. So on the outside, we are not making any structural changes or any constructions. So as far as neighbors are concerned, it is just as is now. So no change at all, only that learning activities will be happening inside the house. And then, if it would impede normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property, not at all, for the same reason, that nothing is changed on the outside of the property. It is just as it is now. And adequate utilities are taken care of. It's running in a functioning home, so all of them are maintained at a very high standard, and we will continue to do so when the operations start. And adequate measures are taken to provide ingress and egress so that there is no traffic condition. So we are using our driveway. Cars will pull into the driveway, it's a spacious one, at any point of time, three cars can fit in the driveway. And the parents will quickly drop the child, drop off the child at the doorstep, and then they will exit. So, and as per my experience, it never happened that all parents will come at one time, because the preschool timings are flexible, and we have one-hour window in the morning, like seven to eight, when, during which time, the parents can drop off their children. So not all of them come at the same time, but should it happen that more than two or three parents are coming at one time, then we will quickly sort out the issue and have a set timing for parents for drop-off. And similarly, for pickup, whenever parents finish their work, they would come and pick up. So not all of them would come at the same time, but if it happens, again, we will have something set out, arrangement with the parents, so that there is no traffic condition at all. I can guarantee that, you know, no cars will be standing on the road or parked on the side of the road for the reason of daycare. And if we would comply by all the regulations, yes, we would totally abide by all the rules and regulations of the district, of the planning commission, of the village board. And this is the picture of my driveway, just to show you that it is spacious enough to hold at least two cars, or even the third car if needed. And I received the review letter, and this is a clarification to the Fire Prevention Bureau notes. So the first concern was the specific use may require significant alterations to this person's home to allow the type of use she's requesting. So actually, we don't need any significant alterations. Last week, when the state fire marshal came for the home inspection, he suggested just three minor changes, and they are as follows: installation of a wall sprinkler on the way to the main exit door, and he wanted us to build stairs to the second exit window in the basement. And he also wanted us to build a solid partition separating the furnace area, which we have finished already. The stairs will be done this weekend, and we plan to install the sprinkler in 10 days' And DCFS does not necessarily work in conjunction with the Illinois State Fire Marshal, so that is not so. It does work in conjunction with the Illinois State Fire Marshal. In fact, only once the fire marshal gives the clearance, then only the DCFS makes an appointment to come and visit us in our home. So that is what happened. We already got the clearance, and we have the appointment from the DCFS. And also, the fire marshal gave me, suggested a few minor modifications to ensure safe evacuation of children in case of emergency, and we are making those changes. Once we finish those, we will again call the state fire marshal, and he will come again to check if they are to the standards of fire safety prevention, fire prevention safety standards, and then he will give us a final clearance and update the DCFS about the same thing. And the other concern in FPB notes was, one threshold she's requesting to exceed is eight children. DCFS allows only eight children, up to eight children of preschool age, to be taken care of in a residential home. So beyond eight, I will have to go to a commercial location. So I can't make that request at all. So I cannot exceed eight children. And this is clarification to Building Commissional comments. So he suggested the requirement of sprinkler system. We are installing one, as recommended by the Illinois State Fire Marshal. And the second concern was availability of 35 square footage per occupant. So DCFS allows eight children, so that makes it 280 square foot area. My house has a square footage of 5,500 on the whole, but the areas I would like to use for children, which is basement and the first floor, they would come to a total of 3,400 square feet, which is more than what we need. And requirement of two exits, yes, we do have those two exits. One is door exit, one is window exit, in case of fire emergency. And concerns about congested drop-off and pickups, we have talked about that already. Ingress and egress, so the driveway is spacious enough to hold the cars, and parents will be told not to come at different timings if all of them are coming at the same time. So we make sure there is no traffic congestion at all. And these are a couple of pictures. This is the classroom I'm setting up. It's a Montessori classroom. It is organized and set up by subject areas. So we have shelves on which there are materials. Kids work on the materials and learn the object to that is designed for. So that is the reading corner and the music corner that you see, and this is the art area that I'm setting up in the second room in the basement. So it's still work in progress. So thank you for listening to me, and I humbly request you to accept my proposal of text amendment to the zoning ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Staff comments, please.
As you can see, the applicant presented some feedback to our standards that relate to the special use permit application that she submitted originally, but we don't have a regulation for daycare centers in the village. So therefore, there is no application for special use permit. Instead, there is the need to remove the silent aspect of the daycare center and homes situation in the zoning code and simply add these uses as permitted, subject to state licensing. So it is a simple text amendment. We are adding parking requirements in the sense that we're adding daycare centers and homes to our list that exists now of parking requirements, depending on the different types of uses and the intensity of the traffic that would be expected in this case. It's pickup and drop-off. There is no remaining, you know, the clients or children, so they are dropped off and picked up. There will be no parking of vehicles or anything like that. So we have it as a low-intensity situation, also providing for employees to park their vehicles if there is an assistant or, you know, anything like that. So we are recommending approval of this text amendment. If you'll notice, in the text amendment addendum at the back of the staff report, I left the residential use table box for R4 and R5 empty, because I believe that in a multifamily situation, it would be difficult to allow these uses by right in a unit that, you know, would have to contain eight children, and there would be issues with noise and so on. So rather than go through the special use permit process for these uses at this time, I thought it would be best to simply remove the "by right," and then if there is a requirement for daycare, there would be a daycare center hopefully nearby. Usually, multifamily apartments are located near, you know, commercial centers and that kind of thing.
All right, any of the current daycare centers located in R4 or R5?
Most of them, no, none of them that I know of are located in R4 and R5. And the state regulations, as we have seen, are pretty stringent, and so they would have to go through that process. If there is a need that we see, or a phone call that we receive from the state indicating that they, you know, will be licensing a higher-intensity residential daycare home or center, then we would, you know, come to you and see what you decide to do.
Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to speak to this issue? You sure? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and open it to the commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Thomas.
So tonight, we have to take care of staff's request before we can do that, or we just, is it one step or two steps?
There is one step, simply to approve or deny the inclusion of a daycare home and daycare center use within the zoning code. Following that, because we're recommending that they be allowed by right, meaning it's permitted through the business licensing process, or in the daycare home situation, there is no business license requirement, simply state licensing, there would be no need to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a special use permit application by any of these uses in the future.
So the people who are already in place are, as long as they're good with the state, they're fine?
Correct.
That answers my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Sharp?
I appreciate that we are cleaning this up, and I have no comments.
It's your turn, Commissioner Scales.
Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it, and I have no questions.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Why can't you get away with that? I gotta ask-
No, no, we want-
I have a couple of questions. One is, in your presentation, you clearly made note of the limitation for children to be eight. Is there a requirement for supervisory and people that would oversee those children as far as a number or ratio between eight children? How many staff do you have to have to have eight children?
So for the age group, three to six years, the ratio is one is to 10. So for every 10 children, one adult.
One adult.
One adult. So that explains that, you know, for eight children, one would be enough, but I plan to hire a helper as soon as I get more than two, for safety reasons, that, you know, I don't want to leave the children alone if I have to step out into a separate room to grab something in. So for that reason, I would hire a helper.
Okay, is there any kind of limitation on hours of operation? Are the kids showing up very early in the morning, or are they coming at normal, like school hours?
So the schools I have worked at, they had the hours of operation from 7 to 6 o'clock. So I plan to do it from 7 to 5:30 in the evening.
7 to 5:30?
5:30.
Okay, is the building subject to any life safety issues like code requirements would be for public schools? I know that we have to have inspections within schools to meet life safety code. I know you mentioned that the state code and the state fire marshal, but there may be other codes. Like, for example, there may be a code requirement for emergency lighting if the power goes out, so the kids can see the stairs when the power is out. Are any of those requirements going to be met? And I'm assuming that the village would require you to do that.
Okay, if the village requires me to do that, I would go ahead and do it, but as far as DCS licensing requirements, it doesn't require. I mean, all it needed was the fire marshal to visit, and they go with his recommendations to whatever he suggests is appropriate. So this is all we got so far, that to install a sprinkler and build the stairs and partition wall.
Okay, I get it.
And then I have a question for staff. I don't know if they're going to be able to answer it, but just something that maybe we should look at, and that is that, you know, when we have these daycare centers in the village, and you know where they're at, we get a fire call for one of these buildings, is it automatic, does the fire department trigger automatically that these are daycare homes, and do they respond with additional equipment?
That is something that would be up to the Planning and Zoning Commission to instruct us to follow up with and explore. I think there is a way that there could be additional restrictions, and this is more of a legal question.
Well, just to interrupt, I think you're just asking, does the fire department know that this is a daycare center?
That's correct.
I don't know. That's a question we can ask the fire department.
Yeah.
I know they know addresses, and they have a sense of all the businesses in town.
I know if they come to any kind of either commercial or business or whatever, depending upon what business that is, they roll certain equipment. And what I'm saying is, since this is new for us, are we going to do that? Because if she needs help on a particular day, and she needs three ambulances because kids are passed out, I want to make sure that we're rolling on that, that's all. I just want to make sure that the fire department has targeted her particular location and the others in town, that we have that, and whatever they need to do, whatever they feel is appropriate. I'm not posing additional restrictions, I'm just asking to make sure that if we get a fire call there, that they know that.
I think they have a good sense of what businesses are located where. We've got many assembly uses besides, and school uses, et cetera, besides just daycare uses.
Yeah.
Even restaurants have large congregations of people where something could happen and require specialized fire department response. So I think they're prepared to handle any sort of call. Plus, I imagine if there's a 911 call, probably state, they've got an emergency, and it's a daycare or a home daycare, and that would be relayed to the fire department.
Then automatically, on a commercial daycare, they're rolling different equipment, probably backup engine and truck to go there. So, anyway, just a thought. It's just one of those things that, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, she's protected, and if you have a situation, the village is going to be there for you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Is the, the last question, and that's really for the village, with this particular special use, does that carry with the land, or does that carry with the individual?
To clarify, we are not processing a special use permit application right now. It's just a text amendment.
So it's a text amendment, and-
For permitted use.
Yes, all permitted. So it is a permitted use, and there's no variations, and so we wouldn't have a need to do that?
Right, no, there would-
Okay. Yeah, I have no further questions. That's good.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Does this applicant meet all the requirements that you have suggested within the code that you're setting up?
The requirements for daycare centers are not in our code.
Okay, that's all established by state?
Correct.
Okay. And so the numbers of people and so on, that's all?
And when you read the definition, what we're trying to do is be consistent with state regulations by deferring to the state in all matters, except for parking. So even the definitions are, you know, consistent with their definitions. So we're not saying we allow up to 10 children, for example, for that reason.
Thank you. That's all I-
Thank you. I have a question for staff, or perhaps you both. Is there a difference between a Montessori preschool and a non-Montessori preschool with regard to certification requirements? I mean, what do you have to do to use the name "Montessori"?
Montessori is a system of education. It's a philosophy of life. So it is a different kind of educating a child. So, but as far as certification to run the business is concerned, we have to depend on DCFS. So DCFS considers Montessori or not just as daycare. So anything is just daycare as far as DCFS is concerned.
So, as far as we're concerned from a technical point of view, then Montessori is a daycare, as, when I think of it as a school or a preschool, it's under the same category as daycare itself. And so these are all permitted uses, no special use. I think I'm clear on the issue, and have no further questions.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
And just to clarify what staff said, the state has comprehensive regulations for home daycares and daycare centers, and everything from size of rooms to outdoor play areas to codes that apply, et cetera. So, and there's a case, I can cite to the case, but actually, many cases that say when the state has a comprehensive system of regulating a particular business or occupation, municipalities generally are not allowed to regulate on top of the state. You have to defer to the state, can't add additional requirements. So I think the zoning text amendment- zoning text amendment as proposed does a good job of just sticking to, is this allowed, and in what zoning districts? And I think it's reasonable to say, well, R4 and R5 may not be appropriate, at least at this time, unless the state tells us otherwise, because of the, you know, condensed nature of living with multiple tenants in a single building. And if we learn otherwise, we certainly could process a text amendment if an applicant comes to the village and provides legal justification for that. And they can't be regulated as home occupations because they don't meet the technical restrictions for home occupations. Nalini, just a question. When we list in the, under the residential uses in the R1 through R3 districts, daycare homes are listed as permitted, and then it says to the left of that 1A, and is that an indication that special condition or Note 1A applies that says they've obtained required state license or certification?
No. The 1A refers to the fact that there is a use that is ahead of it in the list, and it's alphabetized.
Okay.
So daycare comes, you know, instead of inserting a number between 1 and 2, the custom is to say 1A and so on. And the footnote is, if you look closely at daycare homes, there's a footnote 1, it's very small. That's what that would refer-
Oh, I see. So all of those requirements, A through E, you're saying should apply to a daycare home, which means they've got a certificate of zoning compliance, which I think is reasonable, it just says the property is appropriately zoned for this. The one above that letter A, that they have their state license, I think that's required. Item C should not be required, in my opinion. Well, actually, my concern is, are we imposing a regulation that now is over and above what the state may require? Because a home daycare has to be for less than 24 hours. So now we're imposing requirements on if you have someone living with you, that they have to have a separate bedroom.
Right. If they reside on the premises on a full-time basis, for example, if the helper were to live there on a full-time basis and agreed, you know, they leave at 5:30, obviously, that is not something that should be required or makes any sense. The reason it's in here is because for, I guess, streamlining of the code, I decided to add and daycare homes in between, you know, following family community residences. So group homes, family community residences where people stay overnight are part of this footnote. And rather than create a new one with different, you know, so we could create an item 2 and just, you know, delete C. Or we could leave it, knowing that de facto will not be happening.
And I think the letter D is generic enough to say, you know, all other applicable codes and ordinances are met. That's not saying that you have to comply with any specific code, to the extent they're applicable, they have to be met. But item E concerns me a little bit because it requires an initial building inspection and then annual inspections thereafter. I'm not saying that's improper, I'm just saying the state has a comprehensive system of regulations and what the building has to have in it to qualify for their licensing, and it has a system of inspections. So for us to impose a system of inspections on top of that may be problematic, and I'll, I know that's something in our staff meeting I said I'd try and flesh out. Still working on that.
And would that apply to the family community residences as well?
Well, it does apply to family community residences.
So we would want to break it out, probably?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the definition, we do state that they have to have their state licensing, and maybe that would be enough. We'll have to-
Sounds good.
Have to check into that. In the-
On that same issue, Commissioner Lavoy, did you have a comment on that issue?
Yes, and one of the things that I've seen, I'll done elsewhere in other communities, is exactly that, that the operator of the facility has to provide a copy of the state license.
Right. I certainly like that idea.
An annual, so you know in our file that it's been inspected and it's been approved for the next year-
Right.
-without doing anything. But that's been in other codes that might be of help.
One of the concerns that we had during our staff meeting on this was, well, what about fire regulations? Can the fire department, do they have an obligation, or can they go in and inspect to make sure basic life safety codes, fire codes are being met?
And that was, that was my question about life safety issues, because the state does require that as an additional inspection, other than just annual licensure, that, for example, your door closers all work, your egress lighting works, everything works for the kids. It's a separate type of inspection, other than your operational license. It's something that they have to make sure that, you know, that your facility stays to within code requirements, even though those code requirements change. And that's another issue, too. So there's certain things that you have to maintain, and that was really the thrust of my question as far as the additional life safety inspection.
And it's good to hear that the state fire marshal gets involved and does do an inspection. The question, I think, is, remains, and I've got to get an answer by the time this gets to the village board, can the fire department also do its own inspection of, let's say, a single-family house to make sure it meets certain life safety codes when children are present? And I'll look into that.
And I think that they do because they have jurisdiction. The fire marshal's office has the right and the oversight for this licensure requirement, but as far as fire protection, it's with the municipality.
And the case law is clear that the village has the ability to zone, basically set forth the districts in which uses like this are allowed. They can't prohibit daycare uses, home daycare uses, for example. But beyond that, there's some question whether we can impose any other requirements, or even do inspections. So I'll look at that. Another question, in the R6 district, which is a special residence district, do you have this listed as a permitted use also?
I do, and the reason is that R6 districts, even though they're multifamily residential, they're aimed at more of a senior living environment. So ancillary, commercial uses are allowed, like hairdressers and so on. So the configuration of the buildings is a little different. It's more of a mixed use, so it is possible to see where a particular building would have enough space, you know, on the ground floor, set off from the residential area, that could be a daycare center for families coming or adult daycare and that kind of thing. So, you know, I thought it might be good to just leave it in pending state, you know, licensing.
My only other comment had to do with the parking for daycare homes. You list a parking requirement for daycare homes, and then you have a parking requirement for daycare centers. And certainly daycare centers are allowed in certain more commercial districts or multi, the R6 district, so having a parking standard makes sense. For daycare homes, they're operating out of single-family houses. And our code currently, Section 10.06 K1C, exempts single-family houses from the parking requirements, instead cross-references the driveway requirements and says your driveway has to meet certain specifications. So to state that they have to provide one off-street parking space for each 600 square feet of floor area for a single-family house, I'm not sure that we should be doing that. My preference would be to eliminate the parking requirement for daycare homes completely, because they're gonna have a driveway. That's all they're gonna be able to provide. If people need to pull up on the street and park on the street temporarily, the in-and-out, they can do that.
If that is acceptable, that makes sense. In terms of the square footage, for a 3,200 square foot home, divided by six, you know, the number-
These are large homes.
Right. I thought it might be good to have that for drop-off and pickup, but if the planning commission feels that it is acceptable to have cars parked on the road temporarily for those driveways that are narrow and shorter, then, you know, that's something that you can definitely vote on. Let me know.
Certainly, there's no restriction like that for home occupations, where they have temporary deliveries, drop-offs, you know, by a mail carrier or whatever, or a customer, one customer comes in at a time. So I don't know why we, but-
The only difference I might suggest is that with children, you know, they tend to run out in the street or that type of thing. There might be a situation where it might be recommended or more desirable for them to be on a driveway. But other than that, you know, that would be the only difference I can think of.
And then my last question, with the daycare home definition, which has a maximum of eight clients at any one time, I think it used to be 12.
Yes.
And now it's eight? Is that, is that the current?
There was some discrepancies between different definitions, and, you know, we're deferring to the state and we wanting to be consistent. We felt it would be better to leave it at eight, and also some feedback from different individuals that we've spoken with, it would be, for this community, probably more desirable to limit it to eight as well. So coincidentally, it is consistent with the state that-
So the state statute does say a daycare home is up to eight?
Right. And there are also fire codes that are a little bit different in terms of how they look at it. For group homes, which, they're, the definition of a group home in relation to building code, zoning, and fire are different. So for the fire code, group homes are daycare centers that have more than eight children. So because of those discrepancies, we felt it would be better just to keep it at eight.
That's all I had. Thanks.
Okay.
One quick question. We're wondering, how is this sprinkling area by the, by the main door going to?
It's, as soon as we step out of the basement, to the door, in between the basement and the door. So on the way out to the main door exit, main exit door, so we have to install it on the wall, so it splashes all over.
How does that work? You have to replumb through the-
Yes, yeah, we have to call the plumber. We are getting the codes at this point. So we have to draw the, from the water line and have it installed on the wall.
Thank you. I agree with, with village attorney on that parking, off-street parking requirement for a daycare center or daycare home. It seems too much.
Before you call a vote, I just want to make sure everyone's clear on what you're voting on. If you're clear, I won't say anything. If anyone has any confusion, I can just try to make it clear.
Go ahead.
So the zoning code currently doesn't say anything about daycare homes. And when someone calls and says, hey, can I do a daycare in my home, the first thing we do is look in the zoning ordinance, and when the zoning ordinance is silent, there doesn't say anything, then we're sort of in the dark. So this is a proposal to add a rule that is very clear, can you have a daycare home or not? And the recommendation from staff is to just make it a permitted use. You can do it. You don't need to get a special use permit, so you wouldn't have to come in front of you. It would just be allowed, subject to meeting all of the state requirements. So you're not voting on this nice woman's specific proposal for a Montessori school in her home at her address. Her question to us of whether she could do it raised the issue of what kind of rules do we want, and we're recommending you just say they're permitted uses. So you're voting on a new rule, just clarifying that home daycares are permitted, and then she would be able to do what she wants to do, as would other people, and no one else would ever need to come in front of you. So does that explain or clarify?
And thank you, thank you, because it could be diffuse here with what we, the issue before us is the zoning text amendment. Further discussion? We're all gentlemen now, you know, we don't, everyone on the board is a male right now, so I can, I can say gentleman.
I'll wear my red dress next week.
Anything else? I would entertain a motion to approve Planning and Zoning 19026, this, this text amendment.
So moved. Sharp?
So moved. Sharp?
Second.
Thomas? Thomas. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Discussion, questions on? Last chance. Sir?
Would it be helpful, and could we ask the attorney to maybe just list the two or three things that might be tweaked or edited from what's in the staff report, so we're all clear?
Yeah, the motion would be, I guess, subject to pending investigation on the footnote 1 imposition of inspections, et cetera, whether those would be compliant with the state requirements. Also, it would be, would include the elimination of the parking requirement for daycare homes.
And would that also include the local fire?
That's part of, I think, the, yeah, the inspection would determine the applicability of local fire. Because if, if building codes clearly do not apply, but we have jurisdiction to perform fire inspections, then we'll clarify that footnote in that regard.
I think that's important, because I've also had some other experiences over in Downers Grove, where there was one sprinkler, the only portion of the building was sprinkled, and the owner had to finish that system because it gave the firefighters a false impression that the building, the entire building was sprinkled, when it really wasn't. So it's something, when they entered the building, they got water, but as they were in the core of the building, there was no water. So that's, I'd really want to have the fire, local fire inspection to be included. That's if the state law would allow, you know, pretty investigation.
And that's, I think, what the investigation is, before the village board. So we would have the motion that would be subject to that finding, and then we would modify the staff report and the text amendment to show whether it is possible, then we'll include it for a vote in front of the village board.
Excellent. Real call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Crimichael.
Yes. So you will now go before the village board.
So the attorney will do some work and make the edits that are needed to address the issues that came up today. When that work's done, then Nalini and I will schedule it for consideration by the village board, not at next week's meeting, possibly at the meeting after that, depending on if, if all the research and work has been done at that point.
Okay. Okay, new business complete. We have one miscellaneous item, and that's an update by the planning department on the East Quincy rezoning initiative. Johnson?
Okay, we are conducting a study that will end probably in December, December 8th, that involves rezoning the properties east of Cass along, East Quincy on the north side. So the properties right along that edge are zoned residential. However, the uses are more business-heavy industrial, or middle industrial manufacturing. So we'll be having a community forum coming up with the property, or a business meeting, really, with the property owners across the street to present a proposal and a recommendation, and come up with a preferred scenario for these rezones. And then we will be presenting that at the PCC hearing on December 8th.
Okay, and perhaps a background a bit, if you would, the history of the zoning along the north side of Quincy Street?
Zoning along that area has been through, throughout, I guess, since 1979 and so on. It's had multiple changes from B1, B2, back to B1. Some properties were zoned manufacturing. Then in the, I guess, 19, or 2008, or something like that, it was determined through the Com Plan Amendment study leading up to the Comprehensive Plan, that transit-oriented development would be suitable at that location. So more townhomes, where people would be able to walk to storefronts and that kind of thing. Unfortunately, throughout these 10 years, we haven't seen much of that happening. The market hasn't borne it out. The footprints are not large enough, or whatever the situation might be. So the property owners right now are faced with a situation where they're not able to sell their properties because they're zoned incorrectly. So we're simply going to be recommending that they be rezoned back to what they were zoned before, and consistent with the current uses, or to a new category that would match the current uses if they were not conforming earlier. And so we're in discussions individually with each property owner, so that they're, you know, opted in to whatever preferred rezone proposal we present at the forum on the 20th.
So at this forum on the 20th, at the Westmont Center across the street, for the public, you know, people come forward and give their- public, people come forward and give their concerns and?
It is a community meeting. It is open to the public. It will be at 6:30 at the chamber in the community room. And we do recommend that if people are interested in attending, that they contact us, the community development department, to give them a little bit more information ahead of time and to reserve a spot because, you know, we'll have need for, knowing how many people will be attending.
And now, to be clear, at the completion of that meeting, you will come forward to, back to planning and zoning or straight to the village board? It'll be to planning and zoning for a rezoning request?
Correct. It'll be a presentation with a preferred proposal and discussion and a vote and recommendation to the village board for final approval.
Okay. Well, I think this is probably overdue. Any discussion here on that, we'll get our turn here in, in another month or so. Does any commissioner have anything else they'd like to add? Anything coming up, announcements? In which case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Thomas.
Second. So we have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.